Is there a different one for first responders for the job description? Might have to get some of those printed out, so we have some of those. There were a couple people, "Well, I might be interested." Well, here's the job description, here's the application.
Thanks, Mike B.
If you need help, I'll be right over to help you out a little bit.
Hey, Jen, you okay? Okay. Do you need one? I'll just sign the note, bud. We dropped off the night before your face, so I needed it.
By tomorrow.
It'll be in the night.
I'm sure she's got a quick interview, we'll be all done.
We get that filled out, we might be able to vote on it a couple days later.
Sometimes we got some print that I thought I might pass on, but I didn't.
Oh, that's fine. I just know what the last first responder made, there was a couple of people that had been interested. Kurt was gonna take an application and one of them, but we didn't have the right job description just for today. It'd be nice to have just a couple printed out where you can have the right job description on it.
Yeah, not a problem, I just, we have a file.
This, that's the LA heat line.
Oh, nice.
It's a lot cheaper than the original. We're talking about, yeah. That's from robbery, that's about three buildings. The other one was like a thousand, this building two thousand.
The one from NSA?
NSA, yeah.
Yeah, that's just engineering fee, he gave you what you needed.
Oh, I just couldn't hear you.
That's what was requested at the last meeting. That's for them to come in here.
Okay.
Trey should've been there last night, he could've ran for me ten times. Where, Duquette?
Oh. Did you hear about Kurt?
No. Kurt.
Oh.
I think he pissed out at nine times. The league does lead off? Yeah, it was, it was quite comical. Poor guys.
What did you do in the tournament?
Second. Played for six hours straight on Saturday. And we were two holes away from playing another one. But then they had like four or five the others in a row and came back and won it, so, yeah. We'll take second. That's cool. Go drink some water. We were eating bananas out of the van. Everybody was, everybody was in bad shape.
So, job duties, can I just say how I feel it works for him?
You know.
There was a good attitude. I think it's something you gave last time. You still happy?
No.
You can be pretty generic on everything, G.
I'm going to.
Just plain. Alright. So, you guys working on that? ATB thing now?
We've got a public hearing.
Yeah, it's the blow-off selfie? Is that what that's called? I don't, but not so far away. Yeah, well, first responders, I'm not sure when that, they have them at different times. Sometimes with Mercy. But the fire, there's like. Yeah, over from.
Right, that's what, yeah, I can't believe that.
Yeah. I did it, I did it. Wait, I don't know what I just said up for you. I have no reason to. Just saying. Just saying.
Jason, if you try to say three other guys join, we can probably get a dream.
They don't come around till next.
Only three?
We have three or four guys this Sunday, we can probably get it where it's supposed to be here.
He won't do it. I've tried.
Wouldn't have to see his beard through this hole.
But, you know, from work, you know. Somewhere in the county. This second day, I said, "No, run it up in my, your best part, resignation." I saw Kevin doing a report. You know? I haven't scored. Kevin was there. Okay, seven o'clock, pledge allegiance to the Constitution. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, my honor, to the House of Representatives, our first offenders, you know, try to keep some order here and be recognized and get a chance to speak. Anyway, first, we have a guest that's officially on the agenda, Trey.
I just wanna see what we're wrapped up, somebody off sale license.
Okay, well, that'll come with, we've got that on the agenda.
That's okay.
Okay, so, as far as the consent agenda goes, and I think the key word here is agenda. I, as a prelim, I, you know, at the beginning of the year, there was a resolution passed that needed council action for council members to approach or to contact city employees. Makes it a little bit difficult to do business, so I wanna make a motion that, that I can contact city employees, or anybody can contact, any one of us can contact city employees via email, text, phone, for business purposes, to request info, add agenda items, et cetera. And I would look for a second on that. Discussion.
Are you adding this motion onto the consent agenda?
No, I want, this is a prelim. This is a separate motion. Try and just give some consensus here to, cohesion to the group.
What are you, I mean, other than business? What else?
Yeah, there is none, there is no other.
Is official business?
Yeah, just to see what's going on with the city, questions, adding agenda items, whatever. That any counselor will have that ability.
I guess I wasn't there for that, initially, or whatever.
I'm on stand with ordinance.
I don't know if anyone wants to see ordinance, I'll just ask.
While Dave's reading, anybody else got any input on it?
I originally spoke against the ordinance, opposed against the original ordinance. As long as it's in the scope of our duties and a code under state statute and city ordinances, I don't see a problem contacting them, you'd be contacted.
Because of the harassment, I'd just rather get suspended.
Well, it's been violated a number of times, and I was not violated. So, two days after the resolution went into effect, you know, Tina went over to the office and signed checks.
I was asked to.
By the council? Well, that's not council action.
Who said, "You gave me power to sign checks"?
I didn't give you power to sign checks, that's by, that's by law. That's by law.
February 18th. Mentioned by Mayor Klasten, seconded by Wallace, to adopt the First National Bank of Muscles Corporate Authorization Form as signatories of Mayor George Klasten, Acting Mayor Tina Toba, and City Clerk for the meeting.
Correct.
Copy of the resolution in the clerk's office.
Correct, and the meeting that you missed last month iterated the, and we passed it, that we follow all laws of the state of Minnesota and that the mayor will sign all the checks.
So, acting mayor has permission to do this.
That's, pardon me? That's one of the.
Acting mayor has permission.
Only when I'm indisposed.
Only when he's not available.
Yeah, well, sometimes you're not available.
On the days I looked at the checks that signed, I was at home.
What checks did you leave out?
I left.
And where?
I didn't bring them with me, but I got copies of all the checks that have been, that have gone through that account.
Where'd we get them checked?
From the bank.
Are you really authorized to do that?
As well as you are, as well as Bernadine.
I don't get any checks from you.
Well, then you tell Brett, you tell Bennett and Peter.
Well, actually, that was one thing I had during my report, from the request that you brought made at the last meeting, it's obvious that you're obtaining information that's data private. So, and as the data private compliance officer, everything that you have there should be brought back to the office.
I can bring it to the office.
And the other question I have is, who's, who has access to them? Who's seen them, who's been shared with?
This is public information.
No, it's not.
It certainly is.
No, it isn't.
We can go to the auditoriums, we can go to the state of Minnesota.
With the name statement and canceled checks, there are checks that are considered data private. I'd like to know whether you still agree on that, and who's seen them.
We've got an issue on the table here, okay?
This is part of it.
This is not part of it, my, my, my motion on the table is I want to be able to contact city employees for business purposes, to request information, add agenda items, et cetera. That is the motion on the table right now. We speak to that motion, we can talk about other things, but that's what, that's what's on the table right now. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those favors say aye. Oh, you got some?
I'm trying to follow the conversation.
Okay.
So, this is saying that we can't contact any staff at any time? That means yourself, that means the city workers, correct? Is that what this state?
The resolution states, therefore, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Kettle River, county of Carlton, state of Minnesota hereby directs the mayor of Kettle River, as well as any city counselor, not to engage in any unilateral directives or individual contact, that's crossed off, with city staff unless otherwise authorized by council action. So, that means nobody can go off to Bernadine or Dave or Gerald or Diane without us authorizing it. It makes it very difficult to perform any kind of business in the city. And so, yes, it is directly directed towards that, that resolution, so.
But look at the second whereas, that's what the main thing is.
The what?
The second whereas in it.
The personnel committee has determined that attempts to directly supervise or direct employees without city council consent raises concern, you're being contemptuous.
City of Kettle River is a statutory city with a weak mayor council whereby the mayor is wrong. The city counselor has no extraordinary authority to individually make administrative decisions for the city.
Administrative.
Nor does it have individual authority to directly supervise city staff or provide direction to city staff independent of the council.
And that's what's second on, that's why we're in this process.
So, you know, we can contact anyway, so if I needed something from Bernadine. I wouldn't be able to, you know, unless the city council approved it, and, you know, I don't come in office anyway, I mean, I don't have really no business. But who supervises, we're, we're here as a council to supervise Bernadine and.
As a council.
As a council. And, and to make decisions. To make sure, to make sure they're doing their job properly, correct? So, how are we supposed to do that once a month? Just without, without seeing them do their job? Just a question, I'm like, how is the question?
So.
Does each, does each, each company, each, each business has supervisors? That make sure everything is being done properly? Yeah. And those supervisors are allowed to, not micromanage, but we can occasionally stop into places and see how things are going, make sure.
Because that's on the document.
Yeah.
That's not what's been happening.
What do you mean?
Your harassment's occurring.
What? Explain, explain.
We've heard that, we've heard that.
I wasn't even called in. Personnel committee didn't even call me in to say that you're, you know, cease and desist or whatever.
I wasn't, I wasn't here, I wasn't a part of this, that's why, this is why my question is where it is.
There was absolutely no harassment on my part. It's per word against my word, and, you know, my word was never heard. So. I want to be able to, or allow you folks to contact Bernadine or Dave or Diane or Gerald via email, phone, text, for business purposes, to request info, add agenda items, et cetera. That is the question here, that's seconded, and.
Isn't, isn't that what is already on there, that you can do that? In the law, it's already there.
Right, but we want, we, we want, I wanted to pass this motion to clarify that I'm able to do my job as mayor, that you guys can do your job as counselors. If you got questions, if you want to add an agenda item.
Well, that's already in the law, where you can't contact Bernadine for an agenda item. And to ask questions about the city.
Correct, and what I want to do is reiterate that.
But it's already there, so I don't know where, why, why need to reiterate something that's already on the books.
Because there's a question as to whether I can or can't. And I just want to reiterate the fact that anybody here can contact the city employees for purposes of city business. If that can't happen, what are we doing here? I just want to make sure that I'm, that everybody's okay with that. That, that we follow the laws of the state of Minnesota. Are you guys not wanting to follow the state of Minnesota statutes? Okay, I'm just wanting to go against it.
That's not what we're doing.
How are we going to do our job?
It's already stated in the, in the page, in the, in the description, that we can't.
Can I just say something, I'm sorry.
No, hold on, no, you're out of, you're out of order.
Sorry, but you're missing, you're missing.
I know, I know. But how can I, how can I do my job? But how can I, how can I do my job? All right, we're going to call, call the question.
Call the question.
Yup. All right.
Vote.
Vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Dave? Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next item, uh, as far as the minutes go, um, the motion in the minutes that, the first one that I did on, on first page, one of three, uh, it's not quite accurate. Motion, may I, want to scrap, uh, strike from the, these following. The current procedure of placing dispersment registers on the council table for access of the meeting be discontinued and strike those. And the motion will read, motion by Mayor Klassman seconded by Council Lucas and carried unanimously that a new procedure that included complete receipts and dispersments registers by fund be placed in the agenda packets. We've never had any of that before, so I just want to make that.
Excuse me, that's not true.
You're out of, you're out of order.
How do you get in order, George?
You're being recognized.
May be called not to speak or probably not.
The, the, the motion on the table is, and I'm looking for a second, is that the, that be stricken, the words that I said, and that the new procedure, that, uh, the new procedure that with complete receipts and dispersments by fund be included in the agenda packet. I will look for a second on that. Call for a second once more. Hearing none. Motion fails. Okay. All right. So, um, on the financials, um, page, uh, two of six, no, one of six, on the dispersments register. All those IRS payments, are those all for payroll, Bernadine?
Um, I'm still looking for what page she did stage.
On the second page, first page, one of six on the dispersments register.
Correct.
Those are all, okay. Just want to make sure. All right. And then, um, Northern Business Products, the major deal with that is the torn, is what I'm seeing?
Correct.
Okay. Because we've spent a lot of money on torn. Okay. And then, um, as far as the utilities go, uh, with, uh, Lake Country Power and Minnesota Energy Resources, how are those, uh, coded to the funds, Bernadine?
Compensation.
I'm sorry?
Fair compensation.
Okay, so, on, uh, on page five of six, uh, check number three, five, one, nine, five on the dispersments. Lake Country Power, and there's government buildings, city lighting, city parks, fire administration, water, sewer maintenance, um, how are those determined, the amounts that those are attached to? How is that determined?
They're on, on meters.
There are, there's, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven meters.
The, the fire hall and the city hall share a meter. That's determined by, we do, I do a percentage of what the gas bill is, and then it's divided by that percentage. Because the gas bill is separate.
Okay. But the, there's seven electric meters? I'm just asking.
Well, I would still say. I have a problem.
Okay. All right. All right, that's, uh, I want to ask first questions on the financials, uh, claims. So, I look for a motion to, uh, move the agenda, consent agenda. Hear second. Seconded, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries. Reports of the city administration, Bernadine.
Um, well, I might, we'll start where we left off on the other one. I have questions from the request that was given at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I have completed this list. I have from the, um, information, uh, the spreadsheet that was requested. I've completed 2012, 2013, 2014, and I'm working on 2015.
Okay.
Uh, then from there, I had questions about, uh, where are the documents that were used to create this information? Where were they obtained and what type of files do you have?
Online. I get the access to the account.
Do you print them?
Sometimes.
Who has, um, access to them?
What are we interrog, what is this interrogation about?
As under data compliance officer, those documents should be stored at city hall.
I have access to.
Whoever shared them.
The budget committee. I've shared it with the budget committee and.
And then, under whose authorization have you obtained and shared?
I didn't realize I needed, or, what, what is the, what is the information that we're talking about?
There's data privacy information.
What is the data privacy that you're referring to?
I'll pull it from your statute, from, yeah, statute thirteen, section thirteen forty-three, subdivision two, eight, states that all employees that pay is private personal data. So when you're looking at my check, it is private data, and it should not be at your house, it shouldn't be printed, it should be in the city halls. And you didn't have authority from this council to do what you did.
So you're saying that the, yeah, let me see.
I'm recommending that the council motion that. There's a copy over there.
Correct. Oh, gotcha. So you're saying that the financials are, are, are private?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is you obtained private data from others.
What private data are you talking about? Your payroll, your payroll check?
And if you, um, you know, if budget committee wants to view that, they should ask the council that they like to do, view private data, uh, meet you down here, it's stored at city hall, it's returned to city hall. And your access should be reenforced.
What's that?
Your access should be reenforced.
So you're telling me that I can't see the checks or?
Not unless you ask the council for permission to see them, and they're done where data privacy is protected.
Okay. I'll make that, uh, the, what's on the table now? We're talking about your, your work here. So, um, what I will do is make a motion that I will be able to view the finances of the city, and I will not print them out, whatever, but I, I will follow the data privacy act. I was not aware of it, ignorance of the law is no excuse, but I figured we're in trouble here, and all we've got, some things that need to be addressed. So I'm going to make a motion that I'm able to view the city finances, and if I do print them out, and, and all compliance will be, will be followed with that. I will do due diligence to make sure that all compliance and privacy will be followed. I'll make that motion and ask for a second.
What can I say? I guess I'll second it.
Good.
What can I say? Print them out unless you're here. Is that correct?
No, I can print them out at, at home if I.
He has my question.
You have to, you could, you could only print them out here, correct? Not out?
No, he's, he's has remote access, so he could print them out at his.
At, at house. And you could have them at?
Well, actually.
No, no, that's what he's doing. That should not be allowed.
Well, actually, I went to the bank and got, uh, copies.
But who gave you that permission to do that?
I.
Why do you feel that you need to see the checks that have been written out when they're all in here?
They're not all in here. They're not all in here.
What do you mean? What does he got?
The payroll checks.
The payroll checks are private, George.
They're not, my name is on the account. You're saying that I'm not able to view the checks that are on the account? Is that what you're trying to say?
I just don't see the necessity to do so.
You said, so there's something wrong with it. So you're saying I'm not.
For me doing that, I think there is. It's like you're looking for something.
Well, I mean.
What are you looking for, George?
The efficiencies in government, yes.
Efficiency in the government.
Yep.
By looking at payroll checks and checks that haven't.
It's the biggest dispersment in the city. It's the biggest portion of the pile.
But that isn't for you to do. That's a private thing. Do you show everyone your paycheck?
No.
That's not the issue here.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not. The issue is compliance with privacy laws, which I was not aware of and may have violated.
Those privacy laws don't allow you to keep your, that data at home.
I don't know what, I don't know what the privacy laws are.
We get private data and it should be stored and only shared with those that have a need to view it. And it should be viewed in a setting where they're returned back to storage.
And that's the motion.
And I'm, I'm the, the data compliance officer.
Okay. And that's the motion that's seconded and that's on the table, that I would be able to view with full compliance. I will refer to the data compliance officer as far as what can and can't happen, as far as making sure that I don't do anything wrong anymore. But I think that there is a fiduciary responsibility of us, and in particular myself, for my, to be able to find out where the money is going. This is all of our money here. This is all of the taxpayers' money. There should be something going on that monitors where, where the money is going. Bernadine?
You have the timesheets right in front of you. You have all the reports, all the balances there. And if you want to view it at the budget committee meeting, I can meet with you to do it, but I don't believe your own access should be allowed for private citizens.
Where's the compliance issue there? I'm not a private citizen. I'm a, I'm elected official.
But you're a private citizen. What you're stating is every one of the council members should have the same access?
No, I said that I was going to have the access.
But you're the same as any city, yeah, council member here. We're all pretty much the same here.
That's the, that's the motion on the table. The, the, you and I are on the checking account.
Yeah, I don't go there and look at the checks. I have no need to.
No, but you signed the checks for the payroll. You signed the checks.
I'll look at them when I sign.
Bernadine, or Tina, would you let me talk and finish a sentence, please? Okay. There are a number of checks that I viewed that I was not aware of, where, where this came, an eight thousand dollar check for the mower went out. You signed it. Thousands of dollars go out in, in salaries. You sign them all. The Lake Country Power, the utilities, fourteen hundred dollars, whatever it is, I don't know. Thousands of dollars are going out that I don't know about, but I'm finding out because I went online and said, geez, I didn't know that, you know? And I asked questions about where is this thousands of dollars worth of, uh, stuff coming? We are the, we are the financial managers of the city. We have total responsibility, us five, have total responsibility of where it's going. You and I are authorized to sign dispersments, but not outside the council's approval. So, as a, as the mayor, who is designated by the state of Minnesota to be the one who signs the checks, when I'm unavailable, yes, you can, but in just a pinch hitting role. That is, that is the state auditor. I, I talked to the state auditor, the auto's office, uh, and that's, Mark Kerr is his name, if you want to talk to him. Call him up. I got his number, you know? And if we're talking about compliance issues, we're not compliance compliant, but the state auditors, uh, directed. And if you want to go down that road, get on, get on film and say you don't want to follow the state auditor, uh, recommendations. Vote against this, vote against this.
Vote against you having access?
Exactly.
I don't agree with it.
Okay. So you're, so you're obviously going to vote against it. Okay. So you're not going to, you're going to go against? Okay. That's fine. On record. Chris?
You just said you want, you go online and you go to print. You should do that.
Okay. That's what you're named. Dave?
Well, as the data compliance, it says you need to access it here, the, the data officer. Right. That's tax from law as well. So you would have to access it here, not, not go to the bank or live or at your home.
Okay.
You would have to come here and ask Bernadine as the data compliance officer.
So, as a data compliance officer, Bernadine, let me ask you a question. For me to view the checks that are, have gone through and cleared and signed, whether by myself or Tina, I'm not able to view those.
The issue is that you.
No, I asked, I asked you a question about that.
Well, okay, what, what do you mean when you sign them?
No, when I go online. When I, uh, when I go online and view the checks that are cleared through the bank.
Correct. But the bigger issue is you having them in your home, and they're stored without access.
That, and, that's fine. That's fine. And I, as I said, I.
And again, if you ask the council permission to view data private information in a setting as a need, if there's a need for budget committee to do something, I'll comply with it.
My question to you is what is the compliance issue with my viewing online, the checks that I am authorized to, to sign and?
Again, they're, they're data private information. It's my responsibility to control data private information. So when you're accessing it on your own, I have no authority or I have no control for it.
So I'm not able, so you, what you're saying is that I cannot view the account? That I'm, really? What gives you the authority to view the account?
Because that's my job.
Well, my job is to sign the checks as well.
Yes, it's a financial duty for the mayor to sign the checks. You have no authority to decline the sign.
No, because I'm ordered by the council to, yeah, guaranteed.
That doesn't give you.
What's the problem? What's the problem with me viewing the, the checks that I sign, which I.
Because you are, because I have.
You don't look at them. I don't know who you're sharing that information with.
I will not, I will pledge not to share. I don't know who you're sharing it with either, you know? I mean, I wanted to.
I do my job, George.
I do my job. I'm trying to do my job, but there's a lot of interferences here that were. So...
Well, it's my assistant.
I'm, I'm wanting, I'm wanting to be able to view the checks online and fully comply with all the printing documentation compliance laws. That's the, that's the motion on the table.
Is the compliance law, is he able to view it himself without printing them on?
I would say no, because you cannot control the access of who's with them.
I will pledge to control the access.
Why can't you, why can't you come here and do it?
Why can't? That's, that's her opinion. Okay, so...
There's a motion on the table.
We have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye, sir.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails.
Can I vote, vote please? I didn't...
Because this is separate.
Aye, aye, nay, nay, nay.
You don't have...
No, Jesus.
Now, do we tackle this resolution for this council intervention? Should we, should we?
Okay, uh... You gonna do anything with this?
I got questions on this. I wish on Erdean's support. Erdean, did you finish?
Um, yeah, well, I was requesting that the council move that action.
Yeah.
Well, hearing no motion, I'm gonna ask...
Wait, wait, wait. Aren't, aren't you supposed to make some virtue of our motion?
I tell you, I'm not, I already asked. How many times do I have to ask? Are we gonna do anything with this?
Does action have to be taken on this, on the motion?
That is her request.
Yeah, my request is that I'm asking, does a motion have to be made? And she said, yes, apply the motion.
Discussion.
Is there any documents of this sort helping the public viewing?
Well, the, the claim is, the claim is, is that, and I do have copies of, of checks that I got from the bank and I, I printed off unknowingly. So, yeah, I'll bring them in here, strike them or whatever.
Bring them in here, should be strong.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's what it says. I mean, let it turn at city office. And then it's in public, it's all statute. There's nothing wrong with this motion.
No, straightforward.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
On the rest of my report, then, of the twenty, I worked on the twenty eighteen budget work. And then it just, um, the regular three months, and I'm working, I started the, uh, second quarter reports.
So, um, so your budget work. So, what I would ask as a budget committee member is that any, that we keep a, a prize of what work that you're doing on the budget.
It's the normal work I do every year, where we do these spreadsheets for the council. And we have, we usually have a budget meeting, um, in August. And, um, work through the budget. And we do several years of actual expenses. And then expenses to, to June, and I do a spreadsheet. And then also I go through and, um, you know, look at the updates, if any laws have been changed. And read, you know, the fully calendar budget report they send out.
Correct.
To, you know, the parts of anything that's changed.
Right, and, uh, I would ask that the budget committee get these reports so that we can be a little bit better prepared for finding out...
Well, I can present at the budget meeting. That's what I'm targeting, is the budget meeting. So if you want to set the budget meeting for August, I'll be on.
Well, um, what, what has happened that I've seen in the past is that, and when I was mayor back eighteen years ago, whatever it was, is that the budget is formulated by basically you, and we go through and make, you know, just... We don't know where things are going.
No, we've, we've been doing a line. I don't have the budget meetings.
Okay.
When in August, I mean, is that normally at the end of the month?
Um, well, usually after, uh, the meeting. I can't see the calendar, but, um, you know, we set a date for, you know, like, the third or fourth of whatever.
Okay. Just towards the end of the month. Not during our normal meeting.
No, it's true. It's, no, it's true to go through.
Two, three hours, that's...
Yeah, it's, it's to length, it's to length, yeah, council.
So like, say for instance, the second quarter reports. Where, where are those?
Second quarter reports are all of your MW ones, your I forty ones, that do firemans, um, that do insurance charge. Those reports are...
Okay. I'd be interested in seeing those. You can send it to me via email or snail mail or whatever. As, as a member of the budget committee. Uh, it's a learning curve for me. I want to be as, as productive as I can at these budget meetings because we spend a lot of money in this city, and I want to know where it's going. All right. I think a lot of people would be curious to know.
Do we need to set a, a date for that? In August? Whatever. Nobody have it?
Should.
What we use, what we've done, which doesn't mean we have to do it like on our Tuesday meeting in August, regular council meeting, then we all decide what is ready to do.
So we'll wait until the...
Yeah, we just wait until our council meeting on the, I think it's the eighth?
Yeah.
Of August?
So we'll set the date after that in our...
Then we just discuss it that evening, Tim, when it's gonna work for everyone.
Okay, all right. Utilities department, Dave.
Yeah, sheet of your report in front of you. We only have one, one bit on the firewall. I think you got a copy of that also. Jeremy's construction. You're gonna have that later. I did talk to those guys. I think nobody else can pick up any other specs or... I was gonna break up again with last month of both those rest area signs. And I kind of got off tangent there. They said that the problem with the urination was between the bar and the whole block building there. And that wasn't the issue. The issue was the people using, going behind the vet's building during the day when the bar is even open. So, I didn't think that ninety dollars for two signs was that bad of a deal to stop people from doing their business in public. I think Tina has witnessed something, you know?
Yeah, I was letting them run it up today to ask, because I wasn't going to be here. And all we'd have to do is put a sign that isn't flat against the wall of the rest area. Because really, a lot of people don't even know it's there. The fishermen that are going through, yeah, they just use the great outdoors in the center of town. So, I thought it would be nice to put just rest area, restroom or something right there, so that it's here.
And that quote was ninety dollars, correct, for signs?
For two. Ninety for two signs.
Well, would, would we be able to put one sign up on the east side of the building?
Oh, the plan was to put it on the, on the state side.
Is that where it is?
Yeah, so we had it on the street.
That was the plan. That's about three feet long.
There's a sign, there, a state sign or whatever, that just to put them attached into that, so you can see it from coming in the door.
Well, um, there's not a motion on the table, so I wouldn't order this council. At least you have one. Do I hear a motion?
I make the motion.
Okay. I hear a second.
A second.
Okay. What is the purpose of putting a sign up and advertising? What is the purpose of having that rest area, I guess is my question.
For people to use instead of peeing on the street in town.
Well, I understand that.
Travelers don't know, they don't realize it's there.
But what advantage does that give us? What, what, what's in it for the city? What, what, you know, it doesn't create any commerce, we're just being good guys.
If people stop the town, you know, see what it's like.
Why don't they stop, they might just, you know, go to the bar, maybe, you know, have a drink or, or maybe have their kids play at the playground, you know, maybe put some vending machines out there.
I don't, I don't know. There's black mold in that, and at least in a men's place. And it doesn't, it's not very well kept, you know, that's for sure. It smells when you go in there. There's black mold all along the bottom thing, you know? And that's, that's why people would want us coming, you know?
So it's better to use the street, out front and behind the...
That's, that's civic, that's, that's, that's a legal issue. That's something that, how can you control that? It's either, it's either have a sign, it's either have a sign or they're gonna piss in the street? I don't get that. But anyway, I don't see the purpose for that whole deal, so...
We're able to park with little kids that have to go to, they have to go to the bar.
You're out of order.
You have little kids that have to go to the bar.
You're out of order.
Yeah. Thank you for standing up. What you're doing to her is wrong. Those that support on the issue themselves.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. So, eh, I guess I, I don't like the idea that... You guys spend lively discussions are part of the deal. If everybody agreed with everybody, what are we doing here? So, I, I guess you guys know what I'm on this one. Um, Dave?
You can't piss on the side of the road. You've got little kids that walk by. Whether it's sign or no sign, you figure most people would recognize a big sign that's on the wall already. They don't. So what's that, what's the, what's that?
You know, the trap. It was like there was a fisherman that I saw. And normal was to stop at the bar. And the bar isn't open until three, so they use the bathroom.
Okay. I think two signs for ninety dollars is more than reasonable. I know when you're driving through town and that's the speed they drive through, they don't see that sign.
Well, most people go, go, go back to the signs anyway.
They tell you right next to it. So, okay, I just call it ninety dollars for two signs. I'm gonna call a question. Uh, all those in favor of the signs, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, nay. Okay. Uh, next issue, Dave.
I brought up for the, because the lights are so poor in the shop and, you know, and they talk about redoing these. I brought up a, a price from, uh, Magnum Electric last month. And you had made the comment that you wanted to get a, another bid on it. Well, in order to do that, it would have to be, um, drawn up by an electrical engineer. NSA is our risk, our, our engineering firm, so I called up Dave Orsbow and he contacted us. We have a, you have a contract in front of you, what just the, uh, engineering firm would cost just to draw up the, uh, specs to get some more. And that sums a third of what the original price was, so... I don't know where you want to go with this or what.
Do you think there's any funding out there for us to apply for?
Do you think Lake Country Power?
They're not gonna do it for free.
No, no.
And money, they have money.
Because I know they, they give you rebates on, if you buy a fridge or...
What's the motion on the table?
There is a one right now.
So we can't discuss it?
No, I mean, you're saying...
Well, there's gonna be some action. It's gonna take a motion in a second, and we, we don't have all night. So... Is there a motion? Okay, hearing none, move on. Dave?
The only other thing I had to add on that was that, um, Anderson Brothers, who have a trailer from Endado, by, by the city shop there, a couple of their guys went around town. I don't know if Erdean's received it or not, but they're gonna give their recommendations, what these city side streets need to be brought back and moved in.
Okay. Um, as far as that goes, uh, for the Anderson Brothers, you brought up at the last meeting, uh, that there was a request for a trailer for Anderson Brothers to purchase water and park office trailer by the city garage. I had no idea that they were gonna park their office trailer there and hook up with electrical. When I saw that the day after, two days after the meeting, um, I called up Anderson Brothers and I said, what's, what's that? And they said, well, I thought it was all figured out. And I said, well, look, you know, the council never approved anything like that. And he goes, well, what do you want? And I go, well, you, you want me to move it? And I said, no, I just wanna know what's going on. So we went around, and what I did was, it was Mike, the Rata Brainerd. And I talked to him and, and I negotiated with him and I said, what about five hundred dollars a month on a prorated basis? And he immediately agreed to that. So, and, and the purchase of the water. So, um, what I've done is I drafted a letter that follows up on that conversation. And I'd like to basically, um, send it to them just to, uh, just to confirm that we're gonna get something out of this. This note, Dear Anderson Brothers, this note is regarding your office trailer on Canal River property with electrical hookup agreement with Mike via phone. Chargers will be five hundred dollars a month prorated from six fifteen seventeen. Invoice will follow. Thank you, George Plaskin, Mayor. And I would, I would like to send this out on a city letterhead and provide my, remember my contact information with that. We shouldn't be giving stuff away.
No, we're giving away. They're gonna pay for electric, we're gonna pay for the water. What happens now when you charge that and electricity is more than that? They're probably saying, that's a good deal. Because there's air conditioning on that trailer too.
And it was running all weekend?
Yeah. So what if it goes above five hundred dollars per month? Maybe you should just, they were, they're paying for electric.
How, how are they doing that?
By meter. It's on a meter on there, whatever our average uses, they pay what's above and beyond.
This is a...
They're paying the difference.
Yeah.
Okay.
What they have, for that month or for the year?
See, that was a prior agreement?
Well, hold on, I'm talking about the average.
And who, who authorized this agreement?
When it was part of the council meeting last month.
Did, were you aware that there was an agreement that...
Well, he said he talked to them about asking, during the conversation, he stated that he would ask them...
It's, it's a request.
You would say that you were going to ask about, um, getting roads charged or something.
Yeah, and I, and I, I mentioned that on the, on the phone too. And he said, well, I thought it was all figured out. We're not gonna tar the city for, you know, the trailer being there. And I said, no, I don't expect anything unreasonable. But what I'm saying is that we were not, as a council, aware. Were you aware?
Yeah, that's what I said.
What, that, that he was gonna pay for the electric and that...
And the water.
And the water? Were you aware of that?
I, I'm aware of what was in the meeting minutes that we just passed. And if everybody was aware that we were, they were paying electric, then they should have amended the meeting minutes we just passed. Because the meeting minutes clearly say water only.
Yeah.
And I thought it was just, you know, equipment trailer.
And I don't, to be honest with you, I don't remember passing anything.
That's, I, I don't know what the meeting minutes say.
It was, you know, it was a trailer, could be equipment. I, I heard these, he said, equipment, trailer. That's why I thought he meant, I didn't mean he was gonna put a whole...
Yeah, I, I had no idea.
Trailer sit on there. That's, that's quite different than just, you know, your average.
I agree that they could use more power than five hundred dollars.
Maybe they will, I don't know. But I didn't know, let's see, we're, we had an agreement to, you know, for this. But my point is, is that we need to be informed if there's going to be any assets or properties or whatever of the city that's gonna be negotiated with another firm or entity. The council needs to be fully aware of what's going on. Because without that, you know, I mean, you, you don't have the authorization to do that, Dave.
Well, before you call them...
You didn't have, you didn't have a cop, to call that up too.
You're right, you're right, yeah.
Yes, you didn't come for us, to us and say, "I'm gonna write them a letter and say we're charging them five hundred dollars."
No, I didn't write
Until, you called them, and then you come to us and say, "I'm gonna mail them this letter, I'd like it." That's not the way to go about it, George, you're taking group matters into your own hands, and you are not supposed to do that. It's supposed to be a group decision, not just you.
Correct.
So why did you call them?
Because I was surprised at what was going on, because the fact is, is that, you know, beyond the fact that neither one of us were really authorized to call, or to make a, uh, that, neither Dave or myself, nor Bernadine, nor anybody, because the council was unaware of what was, what the arrangement was. So, yeah.
So why did you do it?
Because I didn't, I, I wanted to get something out of the deal, because Dave seems to wanna give away timber to Josh Williams, we still haven't gotten paid for that.
That's beside the point, we've got something else on the table.
There is a history involved here. Okay, of, of unauthorized use, and so what, what I wanna do is get it straight, that any entity, and I'll make a motion, any, any asset or property or dealings of exchange of money or assets, of the city of Cal River needs to be approved by the council.
Take heed.
Yeah.
Exactly, and I will, I will, but let's pass that and, and get it done in the, for the future.
But it's an understanding that has already been made, that we all know, you don't take matters into your own hands, and then come to the council and say, "Oh, by the way, I did this, and I'd really like to send this letter, when I, after I talk to them on the phone."
I'm a naughty boy, I'm a naughty boy.
That's not even worth it, George.
What is it?
It's a unilateral decision.
Like the unilateral decision that was outside of the purview of the council, that Dave made to make, to cut a deal with, uh, with the electrical? You know, I mean, I had no idea this was going on, and three of us had no idea that this was going on, the majority of the council were unaware of the deal that Dave cut. So, I would like to, you know, I would, I would like to send this letter with my thing, uh, with my contact information on there, um, just to, to, to firm up this deal. It's simple, you just take five hundred dollars, multiply by the number of months, and boom, we got it, instead of it would take about six weeks, we'd get about seven, seven, eight hundred dollars out of it. I thought we were getting nothing. So, that's why I did it. I don't
Everyone, at the end, you gotta ask Dave first, George.
I'm not supposed to contact him? And until today. So, I mean, see, this is what I'm talking about, the fact that we have that difficulty of communicating, doesn't allow us to do the right thing. That resolution, we got to figure it out, we got to figure it out, anyway. Can I send this letter?
So that, so that contract is null and void, because the council did not agree, has not even agreed on it.
This is the, this is, yes, and I'm asking post, you know, after the fact, that I spoke on behalf of the council outside
Probably get reasonably more if they use more electricity than just the five hundred, and water than the five hundred.
How much are they, how much are they using for power?
I haven't looked at it, I don't know, you know, I mean, I know that air is running pretty constantly, so, I don't, I don't put a number in there, I just, well, you know, just
It's a matter of whether you're gonna pay electric, and, you know, and the water and stuff like that for use, you know.
Well, Mike, over a brainer, had no idea anything was going, you just said it was all figured out? I said, "I don't know what's going on, I'm trying to find out."
I talked to the supervisor down was on, with the project, Jeff, Jeff Asser.
Jeff, and I said, "Well, yeah, I know, I know Jeff, talked to Dave, my city superintendent, but I don't know anything, except that your trailer's out there." And I thought we were getting nothing, so I, I was trying to get some out of the deal. You're right, I spoke, I know I was gonna get flack for it, but I just wanna Yeah, go ahead.
So we have an understanding with them right now, that they're gonna reimburse them on power that they use, is that correct? And we have that in writing somewhere?
Yeah.
It just got missed in the last meeting minutes, I'm assuming the power card just got missed?
Yeah.
Okay, Dave, I mean, reasonably deducting, do you think that it will be more than the five hundred dollars? I mean, I'm not in the business of ripping companies off either, you, you know.
Well, I don't, I can't say, because it's just a box trailer, you know, and it's with the, it's actually from Mendota, is the one using it. They have to do testing and stuff in there, so, you got computers in there, they got internet access and stuff, so they have to keep things cool.
And we've got this in writing somewhere, that they're agreeing to pay the water and
Just the hatchet.
Okay.
Just the hatchet.
Can we get it in writing that they'll pay it above and beyond in the water? I mean, I don't know.
It'd be a lot easier than trying to ask them five hundred dollars.
Because if, if they, if they just come back and say, "Oh, we're not gonna pay it, we don't have an agreement," and we're ass out.
I, I don't think that it would, as, as a company, but
Because those companies don't wanna drop a contract for that.
Yeah.
Takes more than I meant it.
No, it's
But, you know, they also govern the, the cities behind it, well, just to throw, throw, you know, a letter together, you sign it, I sign it, we're good.
We gotta agree what we're gonna do.
Well, I'm looking at the, the power bills here, and the biggest one is four forty-two, four hundred and forty-two dollars.
Where is it for?
Says "streetlights."
Mm-hmm, that's the streetlights.
Yeah, and so
They aren't using the streetlights?
No, they're, but the streetlights are, there's a number all around. Well, I just wanted to get an idea of, of, that's, that's the biggest one, the other ones are eighty, fifty's.
You go by that, you go by the city
What building has started to open there?
I'm just saying that the usage from the city lights, which run every single night, they're pretty, they, they draw some, some watts, is four hundred and forty-two dollars. I'm just saying that's the biggest bill we get from the, from the, uh, there's a two sixty-one for the, for the pump, pump house. You know, I'm just trying to get an idea, there's two twenty-two for the sewer. I'm just trying to get an idea of what the number is. You know, then, the, the reason that I picked this, here. This is the
Are we trying to come out even, or are we trying to make money?
We just wanted, I just wanna know what's going on, so that we get something out of the deal.
So we're not providing air conditioning to the trailer for the next two months?
And, which I, this is the first time I've heard that there's a, there's been an agreement.
Yeah, I mean, there's a shake agreement, and they would go
There's been a lack of communication.
At least we're coming off fair, what if it's one, I can't, I can't waste money.
Yeah.
You're right.
Maybe we're gonna make it, I don't know.
Well, right now, we just got a handshake, I just wanted to follow up with this, if you don't wanna do it, then let's move on.
Well, maybe by handshaking the letters to the five hundred, say, just reiterating what Dave has agreed upon.
Alright, alright, I'm on it. Alright. We good with that?
I am.
Yeah, alright. Alright, so, so you'll get us something in writing?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, um, are you done?
Um, are you gonna, what do you wanna do with this, uh, electrical?
Electrical?
I got that quote for the electrical engineer for the W E upgrade, the three buildings, like you had asked, and you wanted more dibs on it. And get one that's a third more of what, uh, Gable Magnum's cost was, and you might still end up with, you know, that much.
We have nothing to compare, this is my, my issue.
Yeah, but to compare it with, you have to have it specked out, and to get it specked out, it's gonna cost nineteen hundred and Nineteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, obviously, this fact says, kind of a shocking number to me, but, whatever, it's probably reasonable, but I also know from just personal experience that the EPA does a green cities program, I don't know if you're familiar with the green cities program, and they come in and do about the same thing for damn near nothing or free. I, I would like to see if the green cities would be able to come in here and give us an idea of exactly what we're looking at. It does take a resolution passed by the city council and all this stuff, but then, once we get green cities on board, we qualify for state, or EP funding and grant money. Um, I know Barnum's done this, Pine City's done it, Sandstone's done it, recently Hinkley, they're all green cities, um, I would rather take that route than to green and pay this right now, this month, I'd rather hear from them in August, and, than paying that right now. And maybe they can help us, maybe they can, I don't know.
So you're saying that
No, no, I have just my opinion, that I would rather sit on that, and I'm not making a motion anyway.
So you're saying that, um, it's August that they meet, or?
No, they'll, they'll come to the city council meeting and present what they can do to our city, or, or help us do to our city, and what kind of funding we'd love, like, or, through them, give us ideas on lighting, recycling, curbs, all sorts of different stuff. And then they set us on the right path on how to move forward as a city, to be a more green city.
Sounds like with a little bit of work, we can maybe access some free money.
Yeah, I don't know how much, you know, Barnum's done it, maybe, I don't know if you can speak on behalf of that, so, I mean, cable work for him for a while, but
Right, yeah.
So I've, I would, yeah, so
They should have parameters that you need to be
And maybe they can't help us, I don't, I would
Well, they, at least currently, they didn't have funding to fund anything, but they can come in and pitch in ideas on our D E, or, in the policy.
And I know L E light is a big one for that, so.
Good, well, then, I'm, instead of acting
I'd like to table that, I guess, I guess, and you can maybe get EPA.
I, I agree with that. Table it, go get somebody.
I'll contact EPA, um, C C and Bernadine on it, when I contact EPA.
Alright, anything else, Dave?
And then that, I don't know what you would go with, that contract for the fire hall.
So, that was like twelve grand?
You're asking for a lot of money here.
That's, we're the only one that responded.
Yeah, so far.
What do you do?
Oh, it's been on before last month's meeting, I contacted three of them, and only one of them came, and I looked at it, never, he grabs some specs later, he came back, and then I got, this guy was doing some other work in town, so, asking if he wanna put a bid on it, so.
And with this, was that also the, about the garage doors too?
Yeah, it's on the east side, it's on the east side, and the, the new slab, or baby angle lines, new door.
Who else were you thinking was gonna stand?
Um, my brothers, cousins, and John Makeham.
What part of the slab needs to be?
Wheelchair.
All wheelchairs.
I don't, I don't have a budget for that, I mean, that's
Yeah, I don't know if he's budgeted, I don't know, we still don't have comparisons, I'm, I, I don't, I think it's bad general practice to go with one number.
Could you, uh, probably look up other construction?
Get it worldwide. Outfits, get it worldwide.
Try one more month, and I mean, there's a table to
You want to do this before winter?
Yeah, no, for sure.
Can't we do a bid thing on it? Put something in, did we put it in the paper?
No, I just
Asking for any bids or anything?
No, they just told me to contact three.
That's what we said back in March, three, four, and then one of those first
It's, it's an option, if we put it up on bid.
Yeah.
You're gonna get more numbers, you know, or, or maybe none.
Yeah, that is a good idea, absolutely.
I like that idea. Yeah, we need to get the word out that we're, you know, we're seriously wanting this fixed, and, you know, we, you know
Needing it fixed.
Needing it fixed.
Not wanting, it's a need.
Right, need, want, whatever, um, and we are ready to do business, you know, to the, to the one who can come with the best, uh, overall plans, not necessarily the lowest, but, you know, we gotta go by, you know, preferences as well, so. So are we putting it in the paper as a bid project?
Tell it to them.
I think that's
You know
Okay. I'm, I'm
Do we need a motion to do that, or?
I imagine, you know, a motion to put the bid for the building project for the city hall, and, uh, start exactly.
I'll make that motion.
And what, what, what kind of dates would be reasonable? Yeah, the, the second it, right?
I second it, yeah.
Before the next meeting. Because, we're, we're getting in August, and we gotta
Yeah.
Talk, and we're gonna discuss which, which bid we're gonna go with, and so that wouldn't
It's not too short of a notice.
That's what I'm just looking
Because then you get in September and October, and then by that time, you're almost
So
It's gonna be a business now. But if we wait till September, they start work in October, at, and we're getting into some cold weather and poor concrete.
Well.
Wouldn't go in until next week's paper, we didn't do this one, probably not, so, I mean, we're not even given on three weeks, are we? Is it in the next week's paper, one, two?
We could call a special meeting if we need to.
We need to.
So thirty days, thirty days, give them thirty days to, to respond, is that reasonable? To get a Good thing.
Unless we're really busy.
I would say, okay, so it's the eleventh today, in the paper next week, if you give them till
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Fifteen?
Seventeen. Eighteenth? Because it comes out Thursday.
I would, yeah, I guess seventeen, I don't know, I may need those, but
Because that comes out on a Thursday, so, that'd be like the eighteenth, nineteenth, maybe?
Okay.
And then, so we get back the nineteenth of August?
Nineteenth is Saturday.
Whatever, you know, thirty days is from that. So is that what we wanna do?
Yep.
We gotta do something.
Go on for bids.
Uh, for thirty days, thirty days from today. Thirty days from today, or thirty days from the I don't see what
Say August nineteenth, that's a Saturday.
Yeah.
Because August nineteenth
We're only closing up yet, but they bring them in that day, nobody figured Twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty-third.
Yeah, the Monday. Okay, close on the twenty-first of August.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Clarification of bid opening? When will they open?
Uh, next paper, next, next week's paper.
No, when are we gonna have?
No, what are we gonna open?
At the budget meeting?
Well, we need to open them probably the next day, is what I'm thinking, we can do a five-minute meeting, open them up, boom. Well, I'll relinquish my, uh, uh, salary. Uh, give me, give me, give me a cut and pay, you know.
If we, okay, so say we did the budget meeting on the twenty-second, and open the bids thing.
Work.
Yeah, work first for me.
Okay.
So we just decided on a date for the budget meeting also? No, I appreciate it. Get it done.
Oh. Of what?
She's not here.
I don't know, Dave. I'm on second. So either, okay, so our bid thing is done the twenty-first, and if it is the twenty-second that you're going, can we do?
Can we do this one for?
Why don't you know what you're gonna do? Don't, you don't have to change your plans, if you have a chat, plans that you
I'm not gonna change my plans.
I'm not gonna change my plans.
Well, the bids will be here on the twenty-first, why don't we do it on the twenty-first? That's why they can't be here.
That's a good question.
Field for Rick Peterson.
Is it?
No.
All right, we're gonna stick with the twenty-second.
Twenty-second is on the table. Is that a motion?
Do that.
Second. Any further discussion? All of the, what the motion on the table is, what? The budget meeting on the twenty-second and the bid opening on the twenty-second, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those motion carries. Anything else, Dave? You ever got paid by Josh Williams?
He hasn't gone back to home though, let's put it as well, sit in there, so. He said when he came back, he paid himself.
How much?
I think Bertie had the month.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so what I would ask again is that, just go out and the council be aware of what the deal is, and what kind of monies and what kind of deal we've got, cause so that...
We could probably review minutes, it was last call, wasn't it, was approved?
Okay. All right. And it takes, I don't know, it just seems unreasonable, it takes six months for things to happen as far as money getting. He's got our timber, we got his equipment, we don't need his equipment. But anyway, uh...
Yeah, fire. Nick? Uh, we've had four medical calls, one fighter call. Um, at the last meeting, we had discussed ordering a couple sets of gear, as need for, as needed at this point, to just keep the process rolling for replacing, instead of replacing ten or twelve sets at a time, just doing like a couple at a time. So I would recommend going to the, the, uh, more senior firefighters at this point to start the replacement process. So I was looking at probably like curbs and trains to start with for this year, for ordering gear, and once I have the go-ahead, I will call, hire an equipment and get him down to measure them up, so.
What about the thinking of the raddest looking gear?
Most of our gear, there isn't a whole lot of rad stuff there.
Some are radier than others.
There's some that are radier than others, but I agree.
And, you know, my only question to that is, is the guys who are longer in the tooth, who've been here for a long, they've got less life in their, you know, use of suits. So, I don't know, what the best, what, you guys got any thoughts on that?
I think it's the fire chief's decision what to do.
So we go with what his, okay. All right, so what's your...
So, baseball, either way, if the longer I have approval of get two sets of gear ordered, I'll get them down and measure up two guys, whether it's rad gear or...
Seventeen hundred bucks or eighteen?
Seventeen or eighteen hundred a set.
Well, thirty-six hundred bucks, well, then.
And that's gonna be an every year...
Yeah, question, did we not, I refreshed my memory, did we not discuss getting them all replaced at once at one point?
We did at one point, at the last meeting, I brought it to the table, that if we just started doing two at a time, if that was gonna be, OSHA, if it was our A with OSHA type, cause that gets an OSHA compliance issue at this point. Not that any of our gear is bad. In my eyes, it's dangerous, it's, I mean, that's for gear that's been in fire ten times a day, every day for ten years, that needs to be replaced, yes. Our gear, and it was discussed that we could probably get, if we're showing effort to replace it, we'd rather be fine.
Okay.
So that's where, if we just start with two sets of gear and go two sets every year, we'll never run out of gear. So that was kind of the thought process behind it.
Okay, thank you.
Motion by two sets of gear. Bunker, bunker gear. Further discussion?
You got any questions?
Yeah.
Hearing none, more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those motion carries. Nick, you're gonna handle that?
Yeah, I'll call the fire department, get them down here and measure up a couple of days. Um, we also have one firefighter that's not compliant any longer, is in the area. According to the SOPs, he should be terminated, I guess.
Motion to terminate Randy. He hasn't showed up.
Randy who?
Uh, he, he was put on here in one meeting and hasn't been...
Yeah.
Was it that Randy?
Water.
Water? Oh, I saw the name in my minutes. Oh.
I have a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Did you say he's back in the area or something?
No, he moved over to the area, can't get hold of him, doesn't answer any calls or texts or nothing, so...
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those motion carries.
Other than that, uh, we attended the chief's meeting in Carlton last month.
You and Kyle?
Kyle and I.
Okay.
Uh, we are almost completed with the OSHA training requirements for the year. Just got a couple of small ones to check off yet, and those will all be taken care of. Um, the only other ones, is there, are we having a national open town this year or not?
Not by whatever. It's brought to the meeting and it was, nothing was moving.
Good, I didn't know, so it was just a question.
Yeah, I, I was answering, but it was not me.
Do you do the first Tuesday office, or do you do first this year?
Yeah, it's the first Tuesday.
I, I believe that's exactly what happened, we blew, talked a bit, it was due after, it was due after February, maybe? March? Okay.
So we can't, it's too late on it?
So unless somebody takes that on, looks like we'll have more national light out. Is anyone willing to take that on to try and make sure it gets done?
I would be able to tell.
Hearing none, I guess...
What's, what's all in the detail of it?
I don't know.
Usually it's, well, it's been the fire department sets up the truck and the drop team, and there's been sheriff's office, usually in Monopussy and, and SOP, or not, it's, uh, C I P, hot dogs, and I mean, hot dogs, and we... It's not, it's probably not something that can be set up a couple of weeks, I don't think.
Usually, yeah, we'll plan everything.
Yeah.
We usually have the more contacts.
Yeah, it'll be bank branch.
Sorry about that, I just assumed there was an ad, so it was gonna be here to do it.
I didn't know that we needed to... All right, so I guess the answer is no.
But, and that's fine, I was just wondering for, unless you were gonna have, have hot dogs, you could go pull the fire truck out and have hot dogs.
Is there not an option to have it later in the fall? National, what is that?
It's a national.
It's a national.
Yeah, but I think there are two dates.
Two dates, they were offering two dates at the time. I don't think there was this announcement, so I don't really hold this thought, that was a couple of years ago.
Obviously, it's something, you know, simple, you know, pull the fire truck out, maybe, you know, get squad car from Carlton to come down, grill some hot dogs out. I mean, that doesn't take much, you just call up sheriff's office.
Who's gonna do it?
And, uh, whoever's, you know, bail what the fire department did at that time, I guess.
Yeah, it's just one date, this, this time.
And grill some hot dogs and stuff your kids.
I, I, I agree, it's a good idea, but...
Ideally, consider grill hot dogs for kids.
Right, but the thing is, is to plan and make sure that things are in place, that's the, that's the meat of the...
You should order stuff to give away and things like that.
Yeah, color, color shows and firehouse.
Like, lately, there's been coloring books and crayons and bracelets.
Whistles.
Whistles.
Punch holes.
Doesn't sound like it's gonna happen either, either way, just like, I just need to go over line of people up for that night meetings before our obvious meetings, or the day of our obvious meeting. Now, one other thing I have is, have you been in contact with like garage door company?
No, I'm gonna check that. I'll get the phone number. That's all I got.
Okay.
Um, building department, wow.
Well, Dave and I went back out on our second journey on our nuisance inspections, and a couple people, uh... A lot of them are still on here, that didn't take care of anything. And what we've usually done is send out a second letter, and that usually takes care of it. The ordinance says that you can send out a notice to them and have them appear before the council and explain why they haven't cleaned anything up. So going all in your court, you wanna go that route, or should we just do the second letter or not?
What's the, uh, what's the, how's the ordinance read?
Well, the ordinance reads that, that the second, well, the second notice would be a certified letter, and then it would request that they appear before the council at the next council meeting and explain why they haven't taken care of their issues.
And so, say they don't show up?
Yeah, well, that's why we've always just gone with the second letter, most of the time that takes care of it. And there, like, there's, there's the perpetual ones on here that, uh, just...
They wouldn't show up anyway.
Right.
Right. Well...
And they know better not to do anything, cause nothing's gonna be done.
Correct. Is that a second letter?
We can ask them to show up, there's no teeth in this.
Well, I'm sure it states somewhere in the book, at the point of the year, that's, you should read all those nuisance laws and everything on the books, everything is spread all together. Um, I think, I, I think I'm correct, there is something on the books where you can start finding a person, uh, for each violation.
You have to take it to court or do that.
So they get away with it another year?
So, then why don't we amend this to where we don't have to take them to court to pay their nuisance laws? They won't pay it?
But then you... I believe that the resident, but resident will show you that.
But we're gonna do a legal way to do it, but to get these people's attention, I mean, other than that, we're just gonna have our city look like crap for next year. Because nothing is done, and they know that we're not gonna do anything.
Not that I disagree, but when we're dealing with courts, lawyers...
I'm just saying, if we...
People in this town, we gotta tread lightly. Um, not saying it can't be done, but I think we can't make that decision tonight.
All I'm saying is amend the nuisance, amend the laws through, uh, whatever means that, that, that they will go by to amend them. Um, and then apply them as seen fit. I, I don't, I don't see, and, and then, in some of, in some cases, you can, if they don't wanna pay their fee, you could add it to their taxes. Property taxes, so they, well, the ones, they, they are, cause he wouldn't have that building.
Oh, you're talking about number three?
Yes. You know, and if they're not paying property taxes, you know, why, why are they, I mean, are they there? So... Then we just, just go in a perpetual circle, nothing ever be done, and once people finally realize, city ain't gonna do nothing. Who's to say anybody's gonna do their crap after a while? Once they finally catch on? That's just my, I mean... Then why, why have a city if we're not gonna enforce the laws? Why not just, just, just ban and become a town?
Is that a motion? Um, whatever is gonna happen here is gonna take money, cause it's gonna take a lawyer.
Well, we're gonna, you know, I don't know how long it takes a lawyer to, how, how much does it cost to write a resolution for the, um, Sunday, December? For a lawyer?
Yeah, that, I, I think that's just a template, that's, that's just following...
No, I think that's, I think that's ordinance.
No, it's the ordinance, but all they gotta do is follow the laws of the statements, that's all it does, is follow the laws of the statements, so... It's already been figured out at eleven.
But it doesn't take much to reword the, the ordinance to state that, you know, if you're not compliant within two months, the third month, you'll be, be, uh, incur a fee once a month until you have your, your, uh, your stuff cleaned up, or it'll be after so many months, you get your, your, your property taxes. It, it doesn't take, take long, and, and I'm sure lawyers do it all the time. I mean, it might get built now, of course. It's not the, or the audio on this.
You'd be surprised.
Um, I'm doing this, I don't think. But I guess, you know, council will have to approve it, get the ordinance changed.
Well, I would entertain something like that. However, without specifics, it's harder to, uh, make any kind of decision on things.
Very well, I'll, I'll do more research and dig in, uh, this, this next month, and see where I come with, see what I come up with.
Great, I have a little more to have, thank you.
And while I'm discussing other issues with, with the lawyer, whenever he calls me back, I'll also ask him about this, it's on the same, you know, five-minute question. So I haven't got a hold of him yet, he doesn't call me back.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Good, next motion.
Tina, Chris, is he okay with that?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, maybe not.
You have the consent of the council to pursue this as far as, um, what's your plan to ask him about changing the resolution, changing the ordinances?
Yeah, just changing that, that one ordinance.
What one ordinance?
The ordinance, the nuisance law ordinance, where...
It's a long, it's a long deal.
It's the end of it, it's not, it's not, yeah, it's just the end of where, where you take off, we're taking you courts.
The teeth, the teeth in it, the fines and the...
Yeah, and we add, you know, two months grace rate, and you add fine, and you add property tax.
I'm good with that. Um, in your, in your, uh, round town tour, did you notice that across from Sharon Chambers? Um, in your, in your, uh, round town tour, did you notice that across from Sharon Chambers, the county forfeited land that Gerald used to live on, um, the weeds are overgrown? About halfway back, it's a hundred...
More than every week.
Yeah, but it's a hundred and thirty-seven and a half foot, uh, lot, and about only half of it is done. I talked to Greg Burnham up there at Carlton once, and he said, "I'll have you guys try to shave it a little bit more," 'cause I talked to them too, right next to my property.
Maybe they don't wanna go back there 'cause they think it's too wet?
They, I, yeah, well, I don't wanna go to work every day, you know, I mean, come on, you know? I wanna go to Hawaii, that's just not happening either. But, um, I talked to Burnham, who's a land commissioner, uh, up in Carlton, and, uh, he said, "Yeah, I'll have the guys shave it a little bit more." Well, they're out there, they're, they're, they're high school kids, they're, got a summer job, and they haven't done anything different. Um, what I, what I've done, uh, for your, you know, is, uh, addressed a letter to Mr. Burnham for your review, your formula, or drafted, drafted. Um, and I just said, "This letter is to inform you that your department has two tax forfeited properties that are in violation of City Weed Ordinance ninety-four point four oh, as the grass and weeds exceed twelve inches." I tell them the two property numbers and ask, "We cordially ask that this be corrected, thank you." Can we send that letter to Mr. Burnham?
Why don't you do it as a concerned citizen and not as the mayor of the city?
Because it's the ordinance that is not being found, I've already, I've already talked to him.
Another time you took things into your own hands, talk to us first, then come for it.
So, you're...
I think the reason for not moving that far back is 'cause that never was the law, and that was always that like dealing with the houses.
And it was all, it always had rutted, you know, deal. But as a, as a concerned citizen, yes, I did call him, or maybe I was calling, I let him know that I was the mayor and I lived right next to it, yeah. Um, but I'm asking for a little bit of, as Dave was suggesting, teeth in, uh, in the issue here, that if we're gonna, you know, if it's good for one, it should be good for everybody. I mean, the commissioner, the, the county should know that they're not complying with the ordinances as well, is what my point is. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
We didn't see an issue when we go by that, you know, 'cause it's more of that, that hundred feet or whatever, there's almost...
Forty feet, you know, it's, it's, it's about half more, it's about half more. The bottom line is they're out of compliance. The county is out of compliance. And if you're gonna allow the casemates and everybody else in the world get away with it, and we let, let, let the county get away with their neglect of the, of the ordinances, what do we have an ordinance for? Again, what Dave's argument is, if it doesn't have any teeth in it, I am cordially asking that this be corrected. Being a good neighbor, being a good steward of, of, of their county. I mean, I'll sign it in my name, uh, but I'd rather have the department do that, right? You know, they're out of compliance, they should get a letter too.
I don't think I argued, like I said.
Pretty hard to argue against a really new citizens, and you don't need this letter, whether we have to draft a letter or it's a standard letter.
I think it'd just be a standard letter from, from the, uh, maintenance, maintenance personnel.
Is there, is there anything interrupt the whole law? Has to be more, I don't have that word on here.
It says twelve inches, it's, uh...
Anything above twelve inches.
Anything above twelve inches, grass or weeds, they make exceptions for trees and shrubs and stuff with ornamental, what do they call it, decorative, or plants, but, uh, I don't, I'll just... Yeah, I'll just give this to you, and that's who, who he is, and send the letter. Do I need a motion for that? Or that'll happen?
I don't know. And that should just be a...
So, can we do that, guys? I make a motion that we do that, we send a letter to Greg Burnham at, uh, at the, uh, county. I'll hear a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Chris?
If I find the...
Motion carries, um... Anything else, building department?
Nope. Oh, yes, Dave, did you do any grades? Yeah, I talked to him yesterday. Wanted to hear. Um, he said he's more than happy to do anything, uh, to help the city council in the endeavors. And he's going to come to a meeting as well.
Okay. Uh, commercial building. Um, committees. Uh, or what do we got here? City council, anybody got anything with the city council? Committees?
No, we got a zoning compliance commission. Meeting here.
And really, not hard to discuss other than, uh, the cats, and then seeing if, you know, maybe make a, have a festival for the nineteen eighteen fire. Going on. October nineteen eighteen. Yeah, that would be up to the city's approval, whether or not, you know, the city...
There'd be a lot of planning involved.
What's it gonna be looking at?
October two thousand eighteen.
Oh. I don't have any, there's a Wednesday.
No, I, October two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
Um, to have a festival commemorating that nineteen eighteen fire. Maybe a band or comedian or something of that nature. Also, that, myself in talking to the last meeting here for the Cal River, for the Ma'apaw, this is the last year they're doing it, they will no longer do it. Unless, you know, so if we're gonna have a Ma'apaw, the city's gonna step up to do it. And I think once they leave, the two people leave that are, uh, putting the whole thing on, there, there goes the contacts as well, unless you know that person, I guess, I don't.
I can't remember what we...
So, uh, I guess that's something that can be discussed, uh, whether or not the city wants to, uh, take on that venture of, of Ma'apaw. And if we are, we have, we need more attendance to the meeting. I have to ask Todd.
When is the next meeting, yes?
The twentieth of July.
Yeah. And I think after that, it's every week until Ma'apaw. Over again.
I think we, uh, I think we missed the window here, you know, I mean, I think it's too late for the city to get involved with anything this year.
Maybe this year, but...
Perhaps next year.
To get their, I'm talking about getting their, the people that they contact. Yeah, all, all the information, 'cause we're, we're not, they're not having a mud bog this year.
Right.
Because there's, the lady that, that, that does it is, she can't get anyone else to, to run it. So, there's no mud bog, that, that draws in half, half the people.
Give you a little background, Chris could probably tell you some more stories from the Cal River struggles of, uh, of the past, you know, so, I mean, if... You know, I mean, it's, it's a struggle to try and get people out there.
That, that's fine, but we, uh, the city council need to either say yea or nay, or we're gonna take this on prior...
It was always kind of separate.
What's that?
It was always a separate thing, Ma'apaw was separate from the city council.
Right.
They were, you know, you own it for many years, I have German cat house.
No, it's a, it's, it's a corporation, it's, they're a corporation that used to own land, I guess, you know?
Must own land.
Get on the property. Um, so, I think that there's some basics that are there, I think it's a little bit premature, you know, I mean, I don't know. If it can, if it can happen, it can happen, but it's gonna take a, a critical mass of people to, to, to make it happen. And, um, you know, it's hard.
I'm just, I'm just bringing it up since council's evening. That's, that's all I, if it's not, then, well, then, you know, later we wait, later we wait to, to figure out what we're gonna do, it's not gonna happen either. So, I just, I'm just bringing it up, we're tabled till maybe after this Ma'apaw, but...
Yeah, let's table till after this Ma'apaw, see what, see what we can find out, and then go from there.
But, you know, it'd be...
It'd be nice to have it go again, but it's, it's hard, it's hard, it's a lot of work, and it's tankless.
Nothing's easy, everything is easy, everything can get done.
Exactly. Okay. Okay, um, budget committee, okay, a couple of things that I got from here. I gone on and looked at League of Minnesota Cities and the Office of the State Auditors, uh, that are both involved with the regulations of that. Um, and on the League, on the League's website, they had a little, uh, program that says, uh, "How does your financial future look?", and it's a program that's about, about five hundred dollars, um, city financial planning tool. Do we have that?
We do.
We do? Okay. Um, can I use it? I'd like to use it.
I have to see, I think it's just on my computer, and I don't think it's...
Okay, then I would, I would want to explore the licensure on the program so that I would be able to, and the budget committee, me and Jason would be able to do some financial planning for, uh, for things, uh, to be, uh... So that we can make smart decisions, so that we can make informed decisions about what we can and can't do. So, this, this is five hundred dollars there, I don't know if adding a licensure would be extra, I don't know, but I would want to, uh, make a motion for purchase of this financial planning tool for uses by the budget committee, and I would look for a second. I'll say this, we can have discussion, um, my, I guess my big thing is, I don't even know, we don't even have a second. Yes, but if we, right, if we don't have that, I'm saying, as backup.
Okay, well, you're, the motion was to purchase the five hundred dollar program, if we find or not?
Up to, oh, okay, I'll amend it, up to five hundred dollars, so that we will, the budget committee will have this at our disposal. To provide any funds, I mean, rebook, to provide any funds up to five hundred dollars, if necessary, to provide the budget committee with this tool. Can't do anything without tools, and this is a tool.
We can add a budget.
I don't know if it's gonna have to last.
It's a budget, we can't do it. I, yeah, I think I would rather see where we're sitting with the program, we might already have two licenses right now, I mean, if you could just...
Yeah, right, and I, right.
Yeah, I can check into it, and it's, it's probably at the end of its life cycle, I can't say it's a very usable tool, I can't be able to get, I went back to spreadsheets, you know, we purchased this about seven years ago.
Oh, so it might be an updated version?
Yeah, I have no idea, okay.
If you could look into licensing of that, and then look into it, that'd be great.
Actually, if you, Minnesota Water has, if you look on most websites too, they have, um, planning tools that are for them.
Oh, okay. Well, uh, I'd just like to have something that, that can help. Like I say, can't do anything without tools, and, you know, it's nice to have tools. So, um, also, I found out, um, that...
Your motion at the table.
Yeah, I will draw the motion, in lieu of research to be, uh, to see where we're at. That, okay, um, as I say, I was looking at the, uh, the, the audit, and the audit came up, and I saw on the League of Minnesota Cities and confirmed it with the State Auditor's, uh, website that there is a, since we're all under the two hundred and nine thousand dollar revenue and under twenty-five hundred people, we only have to have a CPA do our audit every five years, but there is some reporting that you need to do. Now, we're paying five thousand dollars a year for, uh, this audit to happen, and it's, from looking at it, it's not that big of a, uh, we could pay somebody a fraction of that to produce the document that they asked for, for reporting. It's a money-saving kind of, uh, of, of idea here. We don't need to have a CPA audited every year, Bernie.
Excuse me, you do, because we have USDA laws mandatory from the contract.
Really? I kinda blew it out a little.
Good to know, thank you.
Love it.
All right, I try. Uh, that's all I have for committees, unfinished business. Unfinished business, as far as Air Fiber and Thomas Seamy, um, I, I think we asked last time, I asked if there's a, uh, a withdrawal date for the contract that we submitted to Air Fiber, Bernie? There is not, so it's sitting on his desk, and they can sit there forever, and then come...
We can withdraw, you can just, you know, get your full jet out of there, yeah.
We can, well, but didn't we give them a signed contract that just required?
They were supposed to sign it first and send it back here.
Oh, okay. Well, um, I say we just let it ride, then see what happens, you know, and we're not, I mean, unless anybody's got any other ideas.
Did you want any outreach to them done?
Well, I suppose you could contact them.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be a good idea, see where they're at, if they don't want it, they don't want it, okay. Uh, fire department SOPs, I guess you guys met, come up with anything? I didn't, I, sorry, I missed it.
I think Kyle said we had to amend the, um, AED protocol because of it being switched from what we had before to the ZOL, and that hasn't been completed yet.
Yeah.
I think is the last real holdup on it, so we'll have to amend that, and then have a...
And add washroom.
Yeah, and add washroom.
Okay, so it still needs work?
Yes.
All right.
Might be done by next meeting.
We can sure try to make that happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Fire department wage request, when I recall that this would be part of the, the budget, um, discussions. discussions from last time. And see what, what, I mean, does anybody recall it differently?
We're gonna wait for the budget.
Okay, 'cause I mean with minimum wage in, what, nine, ten, possibly fifteen dollars an hour, we gotta make sure that we're gonna be able to do what we say we're gonna do and be okay with it. Okay. Um, Proposal from Northwest Pest Management, um, they're pretty sky high with their rates. I think it's a Band-Aid problem to, or Band-Aid solution to a, to a tigger problem. I think we all know what that is. That's my thing. Thoughts? Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, just, this was a cold call from the salesman.
Oh.
So I told him to you, yeah.
Oh, really?
Oh. Okay, next I.
Yeah, no business at this time.
Yeah, um. Carlton County Notice of Public Hearing Concerning ATBs, I don't think, it's just an FYI from the counties, what I'm understanding.
Yeah, notification of public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. Then, um, we got some, um, that we had some ickies in our water back in, uh, November and February, which seemed to be in compliance, or heading our way into compliance. Um, I, uh, I, and Tina's probably gonna yell at me here, but I call, this Simon McCormick, who's a compliance engineer, um, about this, and he said it was, you know, you're, you're heading in the right direction. And I asked him, well, what's going on, why does this, how does this happen? He said, there's a couple of things, it can be either micro or mi- uh, organic material in the water, or it could be that your, the water in your tank, in your, in your tank was up there for too long. And it, uh, somehow, that's how these, uh, P A low-acetic gases form, so, but he didn't seem to be too, you know, concerned because we are heading in the right direction. Any thoughts today on how the November and February, uh, deal got so out of whack?
We wanted the, um, oldest water in the system, so let that, right, for the hydrogen cross stream from the water station, never flushed it, well, that is normally used, you mean normally used at other cities? So, next time I ran a little bit to flush it out and then took the rest.
Yeah, and November's kind of a hard time sometimes to run, run the water, out, being cold sometimes, you know.
But we're going the right direction, so I think that's, you know, that's a good thing, it's already had enough chemicals, so.
Yeah, okay. Um, and did you get the permanganate?
I got the pump, I have to, um, figure out where I can discard the old stuff, which is considered hazardous material waste, so I gotta pump it out from the tank and haul my cellar.
You're gonna have to have a waste bottle do that.
Adopt to the huskies and dump it.
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
Nothing's cheap.
It's not cheap here.
I feel bad, Trey, your last.
Is it Sunday, yeah?
Twenty eighteen.
Yeah. Trey, uh, everybody's had a chance to read this, any questions about the resolution to sell, off sale on Sundays? Motion on the table is to, uh, well, I'll make a motion that ordinance one oh two, City of Kell River be, uh, put in place and enacted. Look for a second. Any discussion?
Marshall.
Oh, did we have, oh, I'm sorry, Marshall.
Um, didn't the state pass a law for, uh?
This, right, and this is just coinciding same deal as the state.
Oh, just to, to amend the.
Make it. No, it's not amending it at all, it's basically going word for word by what the state.
Oh, well, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
You're amending what we can on the books.
Correct.
To go with what the state passed.
Correct, yes, yeah.
That's the amendment.
Yeah. Yeah, it's quite a fight for amendment.
Sorry, I'm not paying attention. Anyway, uh, any other questions? All right. Um, question on the table, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, the motion carried. Um, I got a couple of things, I'm sorry. Uh, number one is that, uh, I got a letter from the Carlton County Historical Society that, and this is, sorry, I'm all behind. So it's talking about submissions, call for submissions to, uh, for poetry or things to commemorate the nineteen eighteen fires. Um, Bernardine, I would ask if, if you could, uh, make copies of this and send it to the counselors or scan it or something like that. It's, you know, or you can have it and you can make copies right now and give it to the counselors for, for that. And the general public as far as that goes. They're looking for participation in some cultural, uh, not sure exactly what they're looking for, but they want, they want some input from us. And apparently this place was kinda hot, you know, back in October.
Is this something you would want me to put in my Kell River news?
Boom!
That would be really good.
I, I.
The deadline for these submissions is November first, two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, so it's.
Yeah, just give me a copy of what you want, um, put in the news and I can include it in, uh, this week's.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, and one more thing. Oh, I got, uh, I made contact with Huggy Bear and CIP. And on a rainy day, hopefully, uh, the Legion Building is gonna get painted. I, I still gotta make connections. Dave, you noticed the, uh, you said that there was some paint over in the city shed? Yeah, so if I could, I'd like to get the sergeant, one of your, either Bernardine or Dave's, uh, number to coordinate if they, if a rainy day comes along and I'm not around, um, as an alternate to let him have a, a paint. You know?
Yeah.
You know, that'd be great. All right. So, I defer motion to adjourn.
I have something.
Oh.
I have something.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Hand it out to our town.
Yes.
Another thing that.
That's my take.
Took into his, but you're saying we, 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 you're talking about the council also. That's not our, the public viewpoint.
Okay, then put your viewpoint out there. Okay. Um, yes.
Uh, I haven't been here for a little while, but, uh,
I'm Gary Peterson, I'm the county commissioner. Okay.
Represents as part of the county, so I always try to get around to my city councils and the townships. I represent about eight townships, just to kinda hear what's going on and I'll, I see Greg all the time, so I'll, I'll mention what you guys talked about on that property to, to Greg.
Thank you, thank you, I'm sorry I didn't recognize you.
No, it's all right. Uh, but I, I like to come to the meetings if you've got some questions on things happening at the county. Uh, the, the one thing that's happening on July twenty-fourth is about ATBs being able to travel on county roads. And, uh, you know, right now, if you have a side-by-side, you know, there they go, but it's kinda dealing with the other sizes of, uh, ATBs and we tried to look at what St. Louis County has done and Pine County. And, uh, you know, I think it's better to get them out of the ditches because they're tearing up the ditches and different things like that. So we have a public hearing, if people are for or against, our ATV clubs are for this. And, uh, but that'll be something that we'll be, uh, discussing and, and, uh, I'm sure the City of Kell River, you can have your own rules about ATBs, you know, just like Moose Lake or Colquay, everything like that. Uh, some other things that are going on in the county that we have a new highway engineer. Mike Tardy was with us for about three years, three and a half years, he retired. We have a, we have Janine Newman, who's been with us for about two and a half months. And, uh, so she's our new highway engineer. And you can see what, I came on County Road four, you know, I was in Cromwell today, but County Road four is pretty much done now and we'll be working in Silver Township with our half-cent sales tax that we passed a few years back, you know, so we could come up with some kind of funding source to work on some of these roads. But I think it's one thirty-four that goes by.
By Silver.
Yeah. Uh, we'll be doing that, we'll be doing one fifty-seven, and we have different roads around the county. We're working out on Eagle Lake Road, uh, up by Cromwell, which is a very difficult road. We have no funding for a lot of these roads because of, you know, certain roads are state-aided roads, other roads are not. And property taxes are already way too high in this county, so we have this half-cent sales tax that we've done. And, and I, I really believe that probably sixty percent or even more that is paid by people that are tourists, home captains or traveling through here, you know, spending money. When you go to Duluth, you're paying for their stuff, right? You go to the cities and stuff like that, so we think the half-cent sales tax has been a real, it's a, it's a funding. We thought we were only gonna take in about a million a year, we're, we're actually taking about one point six million dollars a year. But it costs a lot of money to do a road, it's unbelievable. You know, when we did County Road four, have you been on County Road four? We did it from the freeway all the way to seventy-three, I think the total bid on that was about two point five million. You know, just to do that, you know, that stretch of road there, but they're expensive, but we got all kinds of road problems. Uh, the other thing that we're kinda looking at, at the county right now is Enbridge. You know, I mean, as commissioners, we're fa- we're in favor of Enbridge coming through, we think it's safer than hauling it by railroad or, uh, different things like that. But it's a revenue for townships, for school districts and county. And, uh, but it's, the one pipeline they just gave up on, they're not doing the sandpiper, but they're looking, there is a pipe called Line Three that they have to replace. A judge has come in and says this pipe is dangerous, it has to be replaced, so they wanna replace that one that would come right through the center of Carlton County. So it would take up more miles, Carlton County would give us a little bit more revenue. And, uh, you can see that they're hauling the pipe already, they got pipes stored around, around the county. It's just that you have all this, uh, you know, regulations and different things and all that. So, the other thing is Enbridge is, is really a court case, not so much with us, is that as a county, we don't assess the utility companies, the state does the assessing of these counties. And Enbridge felt that the state assessed them wrong. Now, we collect the money and, but the state does the assessing and, and they're actually gonna be going to court. They think they overpaid townships, overpaid the county. And, uh, right now, we're trying to be really proactive on this because we might have to end up paying them back over a million dollars or more. And there's some of our townships, like maybe Perch Lake or some of the others that have all these pipes going through, they'd be, there's no way they could pay back that money and just.
Who's calling it?
Uh, it's, it's gonna be in courts. And, uh.
So are you guys hiring a lawyer?
Uh, no, but we're, we're, we have a group that's gonna be getting together here in August. Of all the counties affected, that we're, you know, we're working to try and lobby, but, you know, we're not hiring a lawyer because we don't, it's the state versus them, you know, we're trying to influence the state on it.
So the Attorney General's getting involved?
Well, I don't know if the Attorney.
Who's gonna litigate our, you know, the fact that we don't wanna pay this money back?
Well, it's the, uh, it's the Department of Revenue. You know, they're the ones, the ones that do the assessing, so the Department of Revenue is, is their lawyers. I'm not sure the Attorney General's involved in that.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Somebody's gotta speak up for, you know.
Well, we, we feel that the state is the one, they're the ones that made the mistake.
If you're foot the bill.
Yeah, they should be helping us. You know, we didn't do the assessing on that, but this is a big thing that, that, that's down, we're kinda waiting on that. All these back taxes that might have to be refunded, but it's, it could end up being a mess. The other big thing that we're working on right now is our jail. Is that our, we have one of the oldest jails in Minnesota. And actually, the clients that are there are really hard on the building, right? And, uh, and, uh, so we, we have this consultant looking at all the possibilities of, of the jail and what can be done to it, because right now it's outdated. You know, jails are built, uh, now with the center command right in the middle so they can do checks of all the inmates and stuff like that and, and the, the state comes back at us and says you gotta hire more jailers, you gotta do this because of all their rules. And they're pretty much, you know, telling us that our jail has really got some problems, but, you know, the thing that's happened, when they shut down the, the state hospitals and all the problems with opiates and drugs, where are those people ending up with mental illness? They're ending up in our jails. And we're not really set up to deal with them. So we're looking at all the possibilities, we're trying to really think outside the box because a jail is not a very popular thing to build in, in a county. And I, I've seen it in other counties, especially in school districts, they're trying to get their referendum passed for schools. And then here, you're looking at trying to put a jail, so a jail is, you know, but we have this study to look at, what are our options, what are the possibilities? Because we know this jail is not gonna last forever, right? And, uh, so that's something that we're doing there. Uh, we're looking at getting a hangar built. We're trying to find grant money to build a hangar at one of, one of our airports. We're one of the two counties, we got two airports, we got one in Moose Lake, one in Colquay. We have the Light Link helicopter that's stationed there, but every night they fly that back to Duluth. So we wanna have a hangar where they would pay us rent. And then we have a private company has a larger plane that would go in there. And our goal is, is, uh, is to make our airports completely self-sufficient where they wouldn't be using any levy money. But that, that helicopter is, you know, it's nice having it here because it can go out if somebody, something happens in Kell River, that helicopter can be here really fast. If they're in Duluth, you got the two hospitals fighting over who, who wants it. And a lot of times with the fog and the, the weather conditions, you can't get that helicopter out of Duluth. You know, you've probably seen that, you go in Duluth, you get to the top of the hill, you can't even see the fog. So we're, we're working on that too and, and, uh, other than, you know, Diamond Match was, was a sad thing, my, my father-in-law worked there, you know, and there's a lot of friends that I knew that worked at Diamond Match and, and that thing is, I think, gonna be shut down in the next couple of weeks. And, you know, it's in the city of Colquay, so the city of Colquay is looking at what options here. It's kinda sad to lose an industry that's been here for many, many years on that, but, uh, I guess they can make matches cheaper in Mexico.
Wasn't there a division of Jordan?
Yeah. But it's, it's kinda sad when you're dealing with this world economy and I guess, you know, they ship them off to these countries where they can just pay their cheap, you know, labor costs, you know? Other than that, uh, you know, one of the things that we started here that our first client was with Moose Lake, is we got all these old buildings and I'm sure you got old buildings here in Kell River that you'd like to get rid of.
Talk to Greg.
Uh?
Talk to Greg.
Yeah, a lot of them come back, you know, to the county, it's tax forfeit and, and Connie Christensen, you know, is our economic development. We have this revitalization program due to the state, I'm not sure exactly how it works. But we ended up selling the Moose Building in Moose, in Moose Lake.
Moose Lodge.
Yeah, Moose Lodge, and I just was in there just last week. And, uh, we sold that to the City of Moose Lake for a hundred bucks or something like that. And then they're gonna tear it down and, and if we can get someone else to build there, whatever, put it back on the tax rolls. But, you know, it's, it's really, there's so many places in the county that, that I love to see a lot of these old buildings tore down. We did tear down some buildings in Barnum. You know, a lot of that.
Who paid for the Moose to go down?
Well, I mean, the City of Moose Lake.
They paid for the demolition removal.
Yeah, I mean, but I think there was a different grants or different money available there. Connie Christensen would know the most about, you know.
It's a fifty, fifty, fifty percent split.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, through D.
And, and I.
It's D?
Yeah, Department of.
Uh, well, the EDA, it's not the EDA board. So, um, EDA is working with D to get funding into the EDA and the EDA is in turn giving it to the communities.
Yeah.
But it's a fifty percent.
But it's, it's nice to get these places tore down and something else in there and things like that.
And then there are conditions, if you get so many jobs within a certain timeframe, D will come in and pick up some of the fifty percent.
But that's kinda important. But that's kind of important. Other than that, if you guys ever have any questions or anything like that, it's always nice to hear what's going on in the different areas of the county. I know some of you are new to the, to the council here compared to last time. So it's great to see.
Thank you.
Jason, didn't I have you in school?
You did. Yes, you did.
I was coming to see if you learned anything in my science class.
But not to sign up for. All righty. Motion to adjourn.
Tina, have something? I haven't seen this Keller River newspaper or something, so...
It was my take on what was going on. Yeah.
Where can you find us?
Your own? You can have that. I just, I just gave you...
No, it's fine.
Well, all right.
I mean, it wasn't any to me, but you...
Whatever. But it's something for your perusal. Where my vision of...
So you know the news letter?
I should have said the mayor's, I should have said the mayor's letter.
I have to go to my...
All right, look for a motion to adjourn. Mike, a motion to adjourn. Second, all of you, bear say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
No, you didn't. You know, I was hoping you were...
Oh, I did. You take the detour to...
I used to wire to 5673. And I have to license you that.
Okay.